...
Thank you. We have a very full agenda tonight. And first, I would just like to recognize the fundraising committee that has volunteered their time and effort in connection with the Morris High School, and they're here tonight. I do want to thank you very much for your contribution, for volunteering for this very important piece of our building project. I'd also like to, with the board's indulgence, to move the agenda around just a little bit. The fundraising committee is going to stay for Ron Morris' presentation on the building, but we thought it would be perhaps a little bit more respectful of their time if we moved that up on the agenda. So unless anyone on the board has an objection to that, I'd just like to move item 8.1 up to 2.0. So we'll do it right now. Okay, thank you. Ron, you there?
So Ron, before you start, for everybody that wrote, this is Ron Lamar, our chief architect from La Valley Brenzinger, and he's going to give an overview with pictures of where we are with the site and the actual building itself. But before we do that, I just would like people to either stand or just give a little wave. I know not everybody's here, but Steve did mention this, but I have to say it again. We have a very powerful fundraising committee led by Leslie Manning, and I just want to recognize those people that have given up countless hours. First, we have Kay Beveridge. Is Kay here?
She had to leave.
She had to leave, okay. John Morse, I know was here someplace. Thank you, John. Glenn Cummins, I know could not be here tonight. Susan Stover's not here. Bill Haggett. Bill Racine could not be here tonight. Lorna Ryan. Kara Thelim. Brian Hatch. Rick Misson. And Lou Ensel on this report. So thank you very much. Very dedicated group. Our goal, if you remember, was to raise $700,000 to help with enhancements to the new high school, and we are approximately at $450,000 at this point right now. And so we're making very good progress and still have work to do. So we do plan to put out a press release, probably this week, maybe be in the papers next week, with some more information on our fundraising efforts and if people want to get involved in that as well. So thank you for being here, and Ron, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. So we've been working with the building committee since everything passed, and we've gotten to the point where I would just like to share with you, I don't know if you can see this very well. Don't look at the building, the building has progressed beyond this, but this is a pretty good idea of what the site is. So if you, let's see, so from that view right there, you're pretty much on break, driving up to the school. This is Anco Road, right here, and this is the new water crossing. So, excuse me, this is Congress Avenue, and then Anco Road, you can see goes down towards the water. Well, what we're going to do is, we're not going down, we're going to slightly go up off of Congress Avenue, and we're going to cross the water here. And then this is the bus drop-off, and then this is the parent drop-off here. Then we've got parking for everybody and the students and such, and then we've got parking for faculty in this area. In the back, we have a full, equal-sized, regulation-sized soccer field, and then our PE field. And this is the school. And what this 3D model shows is how much of that ledge we're blasting out of the site. That work, in order to blast the ledge out of the site and sort of bring everything down to this level of the school, and then this is up just a little bit higher, there's the two fields. They're going to start that work in June or July of this year. And so, any questions about the site? Just to see that photographing and to see the levels that we're bringing it down to? Okay. So one of the things that we've also been doing is working with the state of Maine to get step-by-step approval during this process. And just as an update, we are still on the same schedule that we've been on. All right. This is what the committee has to go through every time I make the call. So, essentially, we went up there last Friday, and on Friday, they, the subcommittee, so the state board has a subcommittee involved in the project, and... And the subcommittee approves this step-by-step. So what they approved on Friday was a Phase 1 budget. So what that means is, of the $75 million, the state is giving the RSU the thumbs up to go and finance $21 million of that this June. And $21 million is comprised of roughly $15.2 million for the construction of the site, and then all of the costs that the RSU has expended since the project began, as well as things like site acquisition, all the permitting that goes along with the site, and all of the soft costs that go along with the site. And so, this budget, the bottom line has to change, but what we've done is broken the project up into two phases. As I said, it's Phase 1, which is the site portion of it, that'll start this summer. We're hoping that by March of next year, the site will be ready to have the building start construction. So when the contractor for the building shows up, all of that ledge will be blasted down to the levels that he needs to just basically move right into construction. The site contractor who gets hired this year will continue to work from the day we hire him all the way through to August of 2020, when he finishes up. Any questions on the budget? The schedule remains the same. So what we presented to everybody in the fall is still what's going on. We're going to start construction, as I said, this summer, and then we go up to bid for the school project in January of 2019, and start that construction in March. The school is projected to open for September 2020. I'm going to skip right through these and get to some pictures. So this is basically the site that we just looked at, and this is the site that's on board as you come into the room here. The engineering has changed, so anybody who's come to the site with us during our site walks, one of the things that we've done in order to balance how much ledge we're taking out versus how much ledge we need to fill the site, and then the contractor's going to quarry and take off-site to get it the most cost-effective, is we adjusted the grays a little bit. We made things a little bit flatter on-site, and the water crossing is going to be done with a steel and concrete bridge, much like the highway overpass when you see coming into the site. And all of that takes place right here. So the plans are essentially the same. One of the things that we've done through donations and such is that we've gotten the auditorium seats up to about 690, between 690 and 700, like we talked about last fall, and we're still working with the DOE to get some more seats into there. So right now, that's what we have for seating. We've also added a stair in the gym, which is a dedicated open stair, so that allows you to get right from the locker rooms in the gym area right up to the fitness center. And so that was added into the project as well. And you can see, I'm just showing here sort of the updated layout. You can see nothing's really changed. We've been working very closely with all the educators, JP and Julie at the school, to make sure we're getting everything right, so every room in the building is basically being massaged, as well as Tim Markins, who's taken over in terms of food service, and working with him, making sure that we get everything just right. And I will also say that kudos to those folks, because they've also been going to visit a lot of schools to see what they've done and how they've done it, so that they can come back and report back to us. So we're not only learning from our experience in our office, but from other schools that all of your faculty and educators have been in throughout the state. What you see here, I just wanted to bring you up a little bit up to date on the theater. Again, we have the balcony, which has more seats than originally projected. When you come up into the balcony, all of that yellow space, we're going to start negotiating with the state, that was not fixed before, that was just opening up like this. What we'd like to do is put in some more space upstairs to accommodate the theater program. Obviously, that's not typically funded by the DOE, and so we want to start negotiating with them as to what it would cost if we added it into the project. And this has been worked out very closely with Kevin O'Leary from the theater program. The stair I just talked about from the gym, as you come up the stair, there'll be an open rail landing at the top with a glass wall that brings you right into the fitness center, which is right here just below it. We've also been talking to the state about a wrestling room up just off of the fitness center. And so a lot of those discussions are still ongoing, but these are the things that we've been doing as we've been updating the school. And the third floor is where I'll tell everybody that one of the things that Dave Richards did was go through plans and come back and says he needs three times as much storage as we're showing. So what we did was we rotated the stair at the end of the building, so when you see some renderings tonight, that end of the building is going to change a little bit. And the DOE agreed to allow us to rotate that stair, slide some things down. So Dave pretty much gets the stadium storage, building storage on every floor of the building. And so what we've also been doing is not only looking at it educationally, but long-term in terms of keeping the facility well-maintained and operational. In terms of what the building looks like... So we've also been going room by room, and as we're working with the educators, we're coming up with very specific designs based on how they teach now and how they think they're going to teach into the future, and what we're bringing in and seeing in other schools around the areas. Before I get into the photos, anybody have any questions on what I've presented so far? Okay. So this would be a typical science lab. We're going to have actually three types of labs. They're all going to look and feel and taste relatively the same. The casework that you see there, the lab tables, in chemistry and chemophysics, those will be built in. All the other labs, those will all be movable, so they can forever change around the way they deliver science in those other labs. The third type of lab that we have is a fully ventilated lab, if you will, and things like biology, dissections will take place there, anything that really smells. If you've ever been in a science lab and you get dealt with science taking place, those rooms will be completely vented. But they're all designed to be interchangeable, so that as science changes over time, they'll be able to use these labs differently as they move forward. And there are seven of these within the building. The classroom spaces, I know that the furniture's made out as if it's 1950, but what we're trying to do is create every classroom so that we're maximizing whiteboard space. We have a media wall within the room. We're trying to make everything be as flexible as possible, so everything is movable, bookshelves movable, tables, chairs, and we're working with everyone to make sure that we've got enough tall storage in the rooms and everything that the educators essentially need, whether it's English, math, social studies, foreign language, whatever subject matter it is. We're trying to design these classrooms so over time you can just move throughout the building and teach whatever subject within the same space. So this is an updated rendering of the main lobby to the building. You may recall that this wall on the left-hand side, the wall there on the left-hand side used to be all glass, well, now it's a display case that you can see through. So what that did is it solved two problems. Number one, it provided more display case for the alumni for the high school within the main lobby. It also creates sort of a little bit of a screen, if you will, because that is where BRCTC, that's their main space right in the middle of the building. And so what you also see here are display cases here on top of student lockers, more display cases here as you go into the dining room, and at the end of the lobby space is the main entrance to the athletics center, the competition gym. That space hasn't changed much, we've seen this before. What we've done is the RSU and the $7.2 million that was appropriated, that has accommodated more space for dining, so you can have two lunches, not three, just as a reminder. And this is looking back into that room here. And then one of the things that we've been working out very closely with Tim is how the dining works. And so what we've tried to do is create sort of an open marketplace, if you will, for dining. This is a half-wall with glass, but it's glass that sort of separates the serving area from the dining area, allows the students to go in and get what they want, and then come back out into the dining space. It also has these walkway areas right here. They'll have pull-down screens if you lock them up in the evening. It also creates a wall of serving back here, so that that area can also be used for concessions after school, theater events, and athletic events, and so forth. And Tim has put in a great deal of time working with us in order to do that. These images here haven't been updated, but we're working with how students flow throughout the building, and we're also continuing to work with everybody in terms of how the spaces can open up throughout the building. One thing that has changed is the front of the building, I know that a lot of folks have talked about that, and have been involved in the design of this, so that the front entry has taken on more of a traditional look and sort of a historic reflection back to the way Morris High School appears today. So this is looking at it as you're driving into the site from Congress Avenue, and this is looking at it from the other direction, which is southwestern, towards the main entrance. As you drive around the school, and this is just a front shot that you may have seen on your website, as the main entrance to the building. So as the students get off the buses, are dropped off from the cars, or as they're coming around from the parking lot, there's the entrance into the school. And you'd notice there is sort of a balance between BRCTC, Morris High School, the administration's on the left, on the right hand side is the culinary program, which will have sliding glass doors, so that that whole area is looking an outdoor dining space in the good weather. So as you drive around the building, this is the athletics center, so as you come in and you pass the front entrance, you start driving around, there's been discussion on having a wall. This wall that you're looking at with the big M on it, for Morris, not the University of Maine, that is actually facing the fields, so across the river on the middle school site, you'll be able to see this elevation of the building. On the backside of the building, we have the flipper ship, and there's been lots of discussion, and there's continuing to be lots of discussion, as to how much blue, how much white, you know, in the design of this. So every time we meet the building committee, we get into aspects of what are the final colors going to be, how much is on the building, how much is not on the building, and we're shooting for the end of May, even though I told all the educators to begin in May. But we're shooting for the end of May to have 99% of all of these design decisions done, so that we can move forward. And as you drive around the building further, you get to some spaces behind in the area of the BRCTC, so the four garage floors that they're looking at is the entrance into automotive, and then down from the other end, you will have the coagulatory electricity and welding. And all of that, it has been designed so that it looks and feels like the actual businesses that these students will be working in if they choose to go right into business right out of school. And that's it. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment from the class of 1952. That's a very impressive building that you're designing and putting together. It's something that will have a very long positive impact on this community. It's a pleasure to try to raise money for it, to tell you the truth, because the people have been so willing to support it. And I congratulate the school board for bringing us to this point. Now all you've got to do is finish it.
Thanks. That's why we have Ron here, to make us look good. Thanks, Ron. Any questions from the board and the public? Any questions? As Ron mentioned, we still do have an active building committee we need twice a month from now on. It is made up of representatives from the board, from the teaching staff, and from the community. So, you know, the meetings happen at 10 o'clock. The schedule is on the website. They happen at the tech center, and if anyone chooses to come in and listen to what those discussions are, certainly you're free to do that. The whole meeting is... Yes?
Yeah, I'm telling you that. Not very loud.
If you could just state your name.
I'm Lisa Ledwich, and I live in Bath, and I want to thank everybody who's been involved in this. I think it looks great, and I'm really excited, because I have a 10-year-old already in the first or second class of freshmen here in the new building, so I'm really excited about it. So, see, I have a question that I probably should have asked early on, and I'm wondering about energy use of the building, and if there are any modes of energy efficiency that have been undertaken, and any plans for solar panels. I know that, you know, our budget's limited, so maybe that's impossible, but it would stay on energy costs in the long run, probably. And then related to that, the classrooms look beautiful, and I work at Golden College, and they have, the new thing is these smart classrooms, so I guess I'm wondering about how many electrical outlets are going to be in these classrooms for kids' computers and locality heating.
So thanks, just on the classroom part, those tall storage units that are in there, one of those has a cabinet for laptop charging, and we do have lots of power outlets from the building, even in all the common areas. When it comes to energy use, the school board is putting in geothermal, so the building will have a geothermal system. In addition to that, those little pages that I said I'm going to skip, I didn't think anybody would be interested, is we are designing it for the main advanced building program. That is a program that Efficiency Maine puts out. They're not actually taking any applications for buildings that'll be done in 2020 at this time, but we are trying to get Morris High School on their list of incentives. But whether we get the incentives or not, they use a program from the New Building Institute, which is prescriptive, which means they've been doing and testing this for over 20 years, and using that program, we should be able to get 30 to 35% energy savings, just through what I call simple measures. And so those simple measures are things like lots of daylighting, so you saw a lot of daylighting in the rooms, daylight sensors, plug loads that you were talking about, in terms of occupancy sensors that turn things on and turn things off. Just by doing that and doing it the right way, insulating the building properly, we should be getting very moving turn on on investment. Now take into account the geothermal system. So, you know, hopefully not on void, Dave's here to make sure it happens, is that when we're all said and done, it will be very highly effective and, you know, well put together, no turn on energy.
We did... A lot about smart words.
Oh, so the smart words, so the smart classroom, anyway. What we've been doing a lot, the projectors with the brightly projectors that turn into touchscreens, and you can turn them into sort of distance learning rooms in any given stretch. All that technology is changing rapidly right now, so what you didn't see are any projectors, because we believe you could be able to do things a lot differently when this school opens in 2020. So we do have our sound systems in the classroom, and we do have the outlets that folks will need just plug and play in order to do that. So the next step is to talk about gaming within the classroom and using those different types of educational tools that are coming out now, and we need to make sure that the infrastructure of the school takes all that into account.
I think the planning of this has been ongoing a couple of years at least, I think. At the onset, there were a couple more committees that supported the committee, and one of them was the sustainability committee. And we did look at, you know, very important to the community, I think, to look at opportunities to build in sustainable and cost and energy efficient elements into the building. We think we've captured what we can and still keep, you know, keep it within a reasonable budget. Any other questions? And I just want to quickly add Bill's comment on the excitement. I don't know, the board members sense, I think I had the experience of being on the street on occasion, and people are talking about the building more and more as an approach, groundbreaking. And I think once they see, once you see shovels in the ground and ledge being removed, they hear the blasting that'll go on, I guess, there'll be even more attention directed at the building and this project. So, you know, we see the opportunity for the site to even build even more around this particular project. Any other questions or comments? Ron, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda. Item 4.0, how many forego comments for tonight? Item 4.0, do I have a motion to approve, five minutes, for the March 26 meeting? So I have a motion by Luke Second by Allen on the comments, corrections, two minutes. Long favor being opposed. Actually, I got five, because that was an empty. No correction. That was it. I'm thinking you're staggering the, I apologize. So we're all here. I was thinking of the federal. Any other adjustments to the agenda? No. Item 6.0, public session, this is our first of two public sessions, and we ask anyone who wants to address the board at this point to focus on issues that arise from items I mentioned. Any public comment you wish to address the board? No? Thank you. Item 7.0, staff report, do you have a report?
One of the board goals, I think it was goal number three, was for you to develop a better understanding of response to intervention, and so we have Jen McKay here is going to do a PowerPoint to just give you an overview of what we've been working on in the system regarding response to intervention.
While Jen is setting that up, I'm just going to move on with the agenda under committee reports, 8.0. We've already done the building... We've already done the building project update, finance committee update. Finance committee did meet this month after first public hearing of the budget. No further action was taken, as, as, you may recall, we did not have a lot of input at that first public meeting, and the board felt the budget was in a good place, so.
Good evening. So, um, we've presented a few times over the past couple of years about our RTI plan. Two years ago, we came before the board and presented the RTI plan for K-five. And last year, we came and presented once again as we included behavior along with academics. And so tonight, I'm just giving you an update on the work we've done since then. If you can remember, RTI stands for Response to Intervention, and it's the multi-tiered system of supports that we use for students in terms of academics and behavior. And so the first tier is what we do for all kids, and that's the general cultural instruction. The second tier is what we do for those students that aren't making adequate progress with the Tier One supports. And so those are more small group interventions that we provide. And then for students who don't make progress in Tier Two, we move into Tier Three, and that's more intensive, usually individualized interventions. We're doing that for literacy, we're doing that for math, and we're doing that for behavior as well. Our RTI model flows through these different areas. So we have an initial screening tool that we use for literacy, for math, and now for behavior as well. We make decisions based on the data we get from the screening tools and put interventions in place for students who need them. And then we progress monitor how well those interventions are working for students so that we can adjust them and move them between tiers as they need. So since we last presented, in literacy, we have Tier One work happening in classrooms for the most part. Tier Two interventions, which are sometimes provided by classroom teachers, but also by interventionists specifically under Title One. And Tier Three, where we refer students to special education services. Similar approach in math. Again, Tier One is in the classroom. Tier Two, we're funding those interventions through Title One. And Tier Three, we bring students into special education if their needs warrant it. And in the newer realm of our working on the behavior, we're taking a look at how we support students in classrooms across the district at the K-five level, identifying what we do for Tier One. We're looking at how we can support students if they need Tier Two supports through guidance and social work, as well as classroom teacher supports. And you all know, we've implemented behavior support programs in many of our, um, schools across K-12, and so we now have some Tier Three supports in place for behavior as well. So updates for literacy and for math work in Tier One. We've implemented a new literacy assessment tool. We've switched to the Alvin-Simpson now Benchmark Assessment System, and we have implemented that this school year. And so teachers have gotten trained, and we've implemented that and used it with students in our different benchmark assessment windows this year. We have a new district K-five literacy committee that formed this year, taking a look at how we teach kids reading and writing in our K-five classrooms across the district, coming up with some common agreements and understandings about how we approach literacy. And a math committee is slated for the eighteen-nineteen school year. We already have literacy professional development scheduled for the upcoming school year. I'm sorry, that should say eighteen-nineteen, not nineteen-twenty. It's coming up next year. We have a reading workshop that is being piloted in classrooms across the district as a different approach to how we might teach reading. And we're having discussions around common expectations, instructional minutes, how we can see each day when we're teaching reading and writing in our classrooms, and making sure that our assessments for students at the kindergarten level are happening across the district. For Tier Two, we've implemented a new progress monitoring tool that's called A-SW. This allows us to see if the interventions that we're doing with students are making success for them, if they're making the gains that we need to see, and if we need to modify those interventions at some point. We're having discussions around interventions that our, our teachers are using with students, and how to address specific skill deficits, such as needing awareness or phonological processing. At the Tier Three level, the biggest piece of work that we've been doing is looking at the special education referral process. There's new state guidelines around what kind of information that you need in order to refer students for special education. You need much more explicit facts around the interventions that you've tried, and the level of success or lack of success that you've had in assisting those students in meeting gains. And so we're working with staff across the district around examining the interventions that we use and how to document those and gather data so that we can make acceptable referrals to special education when they're needed. For behavioral RTI, we formed a district level working group, and that group has started the work last year, has been working hard this year. The first piece was defining the different tiers of support, and then examining the Tier One supports across the elementary schools that we have. We have, uh, started using a screener where teachers read students' internal and external behaviors as indicators of if those students might need interventions and supports. We're moving ahead with that screener periodically throughout the school year. We've had a professional development day in November with David Eichler, who met with staff and discussed brain-based approaches to trauma impacted behavioral challenges. Knowing a lot of students in our schools that have had trauma in their lives, and so we've been doing a lot of work over the past couple of years, learning about how to work with students who have been impacted by trauma, and where those behaviors come from, and how we can manage those in a way that supports those students the best. The working group is also looking at Tier Two supports and how to build them in across our K-five schools, and then continued development on a Tier Three school-based behavior programs. That's our update on what we've done since I last came and presented about RTI. Have you taken a question or argument?
So, this is K-five. So I have a middle schooler college. I'm sorry, I probably could've asked these questions if you went last, no. Um, she has RTI.
Could you, could you take the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So my middle schooler has had RTI, and I've been trying to get my arms around what that means, because to her experience, sometimes it sounds like kind of study hall or free time. So is, there is RTI at the school, and is that the same as well, or is, so do you think, is it similar, or is it like this?
Our is different, definitely, what conditions, kind of, it's something behavioral, behavioral piece, we kind of, we can max the math and literacy stuff, we're mostly much.
Okay, so I think this is helpful, but the next thing would be to kind of understand more at the middle school level what that time means, because as a middle school, it can be a hot mess, and so it seems like behavioral stuff comes up a lot in RTI time. So I was just curious as to, when you talk about these three tiers, and are we kind of going through the same thing at middle school as at different, so if it's not, if that's not being addressed, then I'm not gonna be talking.
So what I'm presenting tonight is the K-five, uh, district-wide RTI work that we've been doing. RTI does carry through K-12, and so as students move up through grade levels, it is approached a bit differently, um, in middle school settings and in high school settings. In a lot of cases, there's built-in intervention block, which I think is the student qualities that you're referring to. And in that, to give a block, students have to tag those specific interventions based on what their deficits are in literacy or math, or wherever they're trying to ease and do their work. So it does look a little bit different than this, as students move through grades with RTI in K-12.
Does the board have any questions?
Um, so if I understand this correctly, the Tier Two is the place where interventionists are involved for literacy and mathematics? Is that correct?
It's kind of a blend between classroom-level supports as well as interventionists. So a lot of our teachers offer Tier Two interventions for students. They might do small group work with a group that they know needs, um, more letter ID or more feeding awareness. Um, but sometimes if those classroom-level supports are not enough, they do shift and do smaller work with interventionists, yes.
So what would that be equivalent to behaviorism? They're a behavior interventionist?
Uh, right now, a lot of that falls on guidance and social work and administration. And I think behavior interventionist is something that we'd like to discuss in the future. I guess right now, there isn't specific staff tag for behavior intervention of it and guidance and social support.
Do you have any more questions? I just, I have a couple of questions. Assessment is done at the kindergarten level, do you assess all kindergarten groups?
We do lots of assessing kindergarten, lots of classroom-level assessments. The assessment that I was mentioning in this is the, um, benchmark assessment that we do, so we do N W D A as students move through first grade and second grade and third grade. And that gives us a baseline for reading and for math. That benchmark assessment was not being done universally in kindergarten in our schools, and so we are implementing that next year, where all kindergartners will take a kindergarten version of that assessment. What that does for us, they take it in pre-K, and then you're just skipping the year, and then picking it up again in first grade, so this gives us more continuity with that assessment.
And is there any communication with, uh, pre-K providers that serve the district?
Absolutely. We talk a lot with pre-K, especially this time of year. We do lots of transition meetings, looking at the kiddos that are coming in, talking about how they've done on those assessments, what their strengths and their needs are, so that we have a good understanding of what they will need for support when they implement it in kindergarten. Students who are already in CDS, we do transition meetings to set up, um, special education services for them. All students coming in, we do the screening, um, in the screen, and make those transition plans as seamless as possible for kids.
And I think when, when you gave the first, when we discussed this issue here, so it, it struck me, and I thought kind of where Lauren's question was going, but it wasn't that question. It, it struck me that we had, with four or five different versions of RTI, that the administrative building, I don't know, so Woolwich had its approach to RTI, Fisher-Mitchell did its thing, Daglo, Pipsburg, all with variations. There was a common theme, but variations. Do you think, are we, are we achieving more uniformity in the way we provide this service to our kids?
I think that's a lot of the work that's been done, and so we've come up with some universal expectations and common understandings across our schools, while still allowing for the differences that exist. So we know each school has its own challenges, and its own student body, and its own kind of personality, and we want that flexibility to be able to meet those individual needs of the school, but having similar expectations across grade levels, across all of our schools, having the same assessments in place, knowing that we have some common data and some common ways to work with kids.
Thanks. Any other comments? We kind of set tone for public comment, but is there anyone from the public that wants to comment or ask a question on this issue? Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure. Could you, which mine was?
Hi, um, mom, kid in, uh, third grade and fifth grade, Fisher-Mitchell. Um, I just had a, just a question. Uh, I saw the presentation last year too, and I think I understand what it is, but I'm, I'm wondering if the priority to create a system like this is because, like, I just, this weekend I got my letter saying how well my kid did in the testing, and that it was clear that sixty-three percent of the population are below average, um, of math, and it's like forty-four in English. Is this why we're doing this? Is this a, a way of sort of trying to, um, fix the, the failing schools that we're having?
I'm not sure I would characterize the schools as failing. You mean RTI.
What grade is failing, like, in, is this sixty, or? Like, if you took a test, like, uh, here at, in R S U one, what is the percentage that would mean that you are passing? Is it fifty, sixty? I, I don't even know, because when I was a kid, it was seventy. Does anybody here, you guys are schoolteachers, right? What is the passing grade? Sixty, right? So if, if I get a report, um, with my kid, and it says that at my school and my district in my state, that, that most of the school doesn't perform that great, is the priority to, to do this early detection and to, uh, to react to, to kids faster? I mean, is, is, is this our attempt to fix that?
It's our attempt to, it's, it's our effort to address a need that perceived and real need, uh, in the schools, identified. And I don't think it's, it's certainly a need to, to be our issue.
No, that may be across the stadium.
Identify, identify the situation where kids move at different, at different levels, at different grades through, uh, through the schools, and, and as you identify needs for remediation or the need for intensive work with students, particularly in literacy and math, we want to provide those resources to help, to help bring those kids along, bring all, all our students along.
Right. But I mean, I'm, what I'm saying is that, because it looks like that's the budget, like, the Title One budget. I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious, is this like a reaction to the test? Like, is it the, the Board of Education saying something's not right? Like, we need to detect this? Or is, like, is, is, do they work together? Like, is it because we have a problem that we're doing this?
No, I mean, every school system is doing this. It's just, it's a way of formalizing what I think we've been doing all along, but it's early detection, just like our pre-K program that other districts have as well, is if we can provide them with support and give them maybe a kickstart in a certain area that they need it, then maybe they won't need it later on. So it is about early detection. It's not a reaction to one assessment, I mean, we give multiple assessments to students in the classroom, locally, statewide as well, as well as, you know, nationally, we give assessments. So it's something that we've been doing for a while, it's, um, that isn't, I guess it would say new, it's, I guess we're formalizing it as a system.
Well, I, I think the, the second part to that, why I ask, is that if it is reactive, if it is related, then is the goal to get, like, is the goal of, of this assessment to increase? Like, do we have a specific goal that we're holding, you know, not, obviously, things change, but within this system being in place a year, two years, five years, are, are goals tied into how our test scores should, should look, how our schools are performing, right our, our students?
Yeah, I think all of our assessments, whether it be in, you know, the state assessment, or if it's our N W A, which is about growth, put a little bit more emphasis on that. But yeah, just to have goals around that, that we should see improvement academically, also behaviorally in this, in RTI, and especially in the area of literacy and math.
Is there any projection as to where we want to be in two years? I mean, like, realistically, like, what growth do you sort of see?
We, the board hasn't set a, a percentage. We haven't identified this quantity.
Okay, thank you.
Andrea Maitre, and I also have a student at Fisher-Mitchell, and have the same concerns about the, uh, low test performing scores at Fisher-Mitchell. Um, the part that, as I was listening to the presentation, that I am curious about is what percentage of the school budget is allocated to the RTI program? And how does that compare to any other programs that are offered for students who may be on a more advanced track? Okay, great.
I mean, a lot of these activities are part of a regular instruction. But we're trying to break it out.
Well, clearly, Tier Two and Tier Three are not. So, um, looking at a pyramid, it would appear to me that Tier Two and Tier Three may have a little bit more, uh, value towards the total, or to Tier One.
Well, they're, they're, but they're identified as separate majors.
Oh.
They're part of the regular instruction line, the budget, but we'll try to figure out how much emphasis is placed.
I would, I would assume that behavioral programs and early identification would come at a cost to the school, so that's, that's the number that I would, sure.
There's an allocation, yeah, there's an allocation.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
Okay, thanks. Jen, thanks. 1.3, critical assessment. Katie?
Because of the focus on the presentation, I just have two quick things to discuss. One is actually a follow-up from another board goal item that myself and two of the principals talked to all of you about earlier in the fall, the teacher evaluation system. So I promised that this spring I'd let you know how the committee was doing. And so where we are is we have fully finished developing our SLO model and are happy with how we've been able to simplify it for teachers moving forward to make it less cumbersome and more focused on student growth rather than focused on a lot of the paperwork that sometimes setting a goal related to students progressing has taken over in the past. So that's really exciting. We have also updated the handbook related to the teacher evaluation model and will be able to publish that by this summer. We're planning to have a webpage completely related to our teacher evaluation model that I'll be able to review and show with you as soon as it's completed. I'll have the handbook and all the forums and be available for teachers as well as anyone who's interested in looking into what we're doing here in our district. And finally, because we've made so many changes this year, I just wanted to let the board know that all teachers will get a training on our new approach this coming August when we return. And new teachers, teachers new to this district, will also do a half-day training in late September after they've started with their students. Partner with me and some of the teachers from the BEEPG committee running that training. Just because we feel to write an SLO, you really have to know your students and know the curriculum a little bit better. And it's hard to learn so many things as a new teacher in those few days before school starts. And so that training will happen later on when they've kind of gotten their feet a little bit more wet. Any questions on that update?
Questions for Katie?
Okay. And the other piece that I wanted to go over is dumping a dev, because we've talked about this so many times, but just to make the board aware, and I did send you some emails over vacation about where things stand with some of the different proficiency bills that are going through. And so I'm sure you've read and seen some of this, but just to let you know of the ones that were out there, the Department of Education's attempt to repeal and replace the old proficiency-based diploma law is dead. So their new plan is not going to be moved forward. The bill to completely repeal all proficiency requirements is also dead, so that's not going to be happening. The only one that is still alive per se that we don't have an answer on, and I can explain why, is one that has two parts. It would delay the start of the requirements by a year. So this year's ninth graders are the first class that are supposed to graduate under the PBL requirements. It would push it back to next year's ninth graders. The other part of it is to potentially make the PBL requirements optional or a local decision. So they would still be recommended by the Department of Education, but each district would get to determine whether they wanted to continue with that set of requirements for a diploma or if they wanted to go back to the old system before PBL. However, that was actually not voted on because the legislature adjourned before that vote happened. They didn't have enough votes to continue their session. And there's no word yet on when they will meet again. And so in terms of where things stand, that basically means this might never be voted on if they don't come back to this particular bill. It could mean that if they do come back, just because some of the education funding, a large part of the education funding is also waiting in the balance for them to do a vote, that they might vote fairly soon or, so really it's a big question mark. And in the meantime, messaging around all of this is, you know, nothing new voted on, everything is as it was before, the old sort of laws stand. So hopefully that explanation makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that, because it's so confusing at this part, there are so many different rumors going around, around what's actually happening. I just wanted everyone to know what was truly taking place.
So our ninth graders are the first, they're still under the old law requirements.
Correct. So as of right now, they will be the first ones.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I think lots are asked. Thanks. 9.0, student representative Sidney. Nice to meet you. Do you have any comments you'd like to make? If you could pull a mic over. I don't want to put you on the spot. You know, like.
Okay, well, I would have to say, I'd like to be back. Sports is kind of taking over my life. And I can slowly see that sports is taking over worse again. We just had our third quarter assembly and it kind of recapped what we've been doing. We had a great run at the Ocean Bowl in Colorado, which was Boulder, one of my favorites, which was there. So she did a great job with that. We had one of our students, she got the main state award, Jenny did, and I think overall the school has been doing real well. I mean, everyone's spirit throughout, we had the SATs, which went really well, and everyone's looking forward to summer.
It's barely spring. That's good, thank you. Thanks, Sidney. 10.0, support technical.
Just a couple of items. John Surban's graduates in April had their career development conference, and we had 14 students participate. We had one third place in a sales pitch event, and we had four first-place teams, and they were anything from group challenges to communications to marketplace presentations to public speaking. So congratulations to the students and Maria Morris once again for a great showing. I think we've mentioned this before, I think I saw our lease here earlier, but we do have three teams qualified for the world finals of Odyssey the Mind, a total of 18 students that will be going to Iowa, so congratulations to them. And I believe we'll have a group of students from Odyssey the Mind as well as from the Ocean Bowl hopefully come to our May meetings so they can talk about their experiences. Battle of the Books was on April 5th, right here in this room, and it's always amazing every year. The place was packed at DC in the house, and it's a very friendly academic competition amongst the students and the staff. And so very, again, very well attended. And just lastly, you saw in Justin Keller's report, but it's great to see the Special Olympians have an opportunity close by. They did the swimming at Bowden College last month, and they'll be competing in track on May 10th over at Wiscasid High School. So it's always just a great event to be able to watch. That's it.
Thanks, Patrick. Financial report. 10.2.
Financial report. This is for the end of March, so we're headed into our final quarter of the year, and we've spent 65%, not 75 yet because the largest month is the month of June, because there is six pay periods at post in the month of June that cover seven pay periods. And so we project that we have 91%. That's what we're projecting that we'll spend, and actually we'll spend more than that. So we watch that amount remaining of the 2.4 million and hope that it's about to come in, because the only thing that's encumbered once again is salary benefits. As far as revenue, we're at almost 75%, so that's more reflective of the three quarters that we've been through. But at this point in time, everything is on target from what we've been watching. We're always watching special ed, but things seem to be evening out there between the instruction and the tuition line, so we're pretty good shape.
Ask, any questions? Surely we have questions. Okay. 11.1, review of board goals. Jen, yes.
So part of our goal is to be constantly measuring our achievement towards our board goals. So I think tonight that we've made a really good effort on that behalf. We've followed up with our goal number one, which is being on top of the North Spirit to see construction project. We have, again, received some really good training and some education on our goal three of the RTI process, and I think that we're continuing to go forward and develop our understanding of teacher evaluation system and keep track of how that's impacted our education. The one thing I think I would ask is that, are we due for an update on our communications committee anytime soon? Is that okay?
I know some that we need to follow deep with the comment, some of the stuff that was suggested, and we should probably do a follow-up.
Thanks. 12.1 is a public forum budget. We're scheduled on May 7th. We have a board meeting scheduled where we will do the second reading of the budget and sign the law. So hopefully our board members will be able to game. So on May 7th, we'll actually go down the budget and sign the law, the tax reports from the state, our localities. So any questions from the board? We've, the budget has not changed, there would not change from first public hearing to the second. And we're looking at about a $30.1 million budget. Local, in terms of local contribution, it's currently centered at $18 million, $18.2 million. And then the state contribution follows, follows that, and those are the types of indicators. Indicated some, I'll call confusion up in Augusta on proficiency based diploma. There is some confusion as well, at least a portion of the state. We certainly expect that to be worked out politically for too long, hopefully. But there still is a portion of the state's share that is involved because of issues that they're dealing with in Augusta. Any comments from the board? Word of questions, everybody? No? Anyone from the public wish to address the board on the budget? No, if not, thank you very much. 12.2, personal items.
And the first one is retirement. Pam is here in some place. Pam, could you just stand for a second? And so Pam is a graduate her on her retirement. She's been with the district for 10 years and has done a lot of positive things for our adult ed programs. So thank you, Pam. And the other one is the resignation. Amanda Nalls, guidance council of ed force, and Amanda's been with us for eight years.
J P started to applaud when we accepted the resignation.
I want to do applause for Pam Holden.
Thanks, Pam. It's a great program. It's always a delight to see students move through that, through that book. Congratulations. Double sure. 13.2, we have a list of informationary teachers. The recommendation administration to rehire and reemploy those teachers. Any questions? Any have a motion? Yep. Motion by Blue, sent by Megan. Now I ask your questions. Any questions? Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item 12.4, as Ron said in his presentation, there's a portion of this budget which is triggered or assigned to the site for children.
As Ron said, the site budget is 21 million and some change. And we went to the state board last Friday, they approved that number, but it was just a subcommittee of the state board. So we go back on May 9th for the full state board to approve it. And so we just felt it would be worthwhile to see if you had any questions, but also to maybe get a motion from you, a level of support for that that we could share with the state board next Wednesday.
So we have a motion, what? Motion by Bill, sent by Blue. So we're not, the vote would not be, we're not adopting, we're not accepting or adopting the numbers at this point because that could still change when bids come in and it's reviewed. We're just indicating generally, not generally, we're indicating specifically to the state will be our need support for the board on this budget. Okay? Jen?
Oh, just a question. So this is specifically for phase one. Will that process do the same with the other phases at some point when we get here?
I think, I think it's just what Ron and Patrick want to show is that they're not doing this type of section, they have board, board support.
Would we, is this motion for all phases or just?
It's going to be first.
Maybe we'll do another motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Blue, sent by Blue. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. 12.5, consider action to terminate the teaching contract of the individual impacted by reduction of force that was voted on by the board on March 26th. This is related to the middle school, the redesign of the middle school.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Phil.
Pursuant to 28 MRSA 13201, I move that the board terminate the teaching contract of Don Seymour as a result of the elimination of the computer science position at the Bath Middle School effective as of the day immediately preceding the first day of the 2018-19 teacher work year.
Thanks, Bill. Second. Second, okay. Second by Allen, we have a motion by Bill, second by Allen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. 12.6, 12.6A, we have, these are out of state field trip requests, 12.6A, BMS students to attend the Fuqua to play day at UofA State in Foxborough. 12.6A, PMS students to attend the Fuel Up to Play Day at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. Motion approved. We have a motion by Bill, second by Blue. Discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And the second field trip request, 12.6B, again, PMS students to visit the Boston Museum on June 14th. Do I have a motion approved? Motion by Bill, second by Allen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have three first readings, 12.8 and 12.9. No action is required on these items. First, 12.8A, we have job description for the team of students that apply for to vote at Bath Middle School in the village. Opportunity for the board to ask questions about the job description.
Thank you, Mr. 12.7. I did it. It's like it's a statement, it's a statement.
12.7. I'm sorry. Yeah, 12.7, it's another out of state field trip request. 12.7. We have an out of state field trip request for Morse High School students to attend Fuel Up to Play at Gillette Stadium in Foxborough. This is an announcement.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a motion approved? All in favor? Any opposed? Now, on to 12.8, 12.8A, first reading on job description for the team of students. And the budget is funding the hiring of students. One for PMS, one for the village. Any questions on job descriptions? We'll vote on these in the next meeting.
I have a second question. So there are two very different kinds of schools. One's a middle school, one's a K8s. With this job description, I understand that this is a specific list entirely on communities, but would it make sense since it would be a different kind of job description because it would be a really different population sort of?
I don't think so. I mean, Jason and Brandon and I, Katie met, we tried to come up with one that hit on, you know, the major responsibilities. I mean, obviously developmentally, it's different, but you're still helping with student behavior and working with staff. So I think there's a lot of commonalities. But again, I mean, as we play this out, obviously, you know, the person at board which might have a little different job duties than the PMS, but in essence, mostly the same.
Any other questions from the board at this point? Again, we'll take these up for a vote next meeting. 12.9, 12.9A, policy J L C D minimization requirements. Is this a first reading? Any questions?
We have a complaint from a student from Fifth Street. A pre- pre-K. Mr. Chairman, is this to bring us in compliance with state regulations? That's what this is all about.
Okay, 12, 12.9P, J I C E, student media censorship. Any questions?
So policy committee meets once a month at 7:15 in the morning in central office. And never in my time here, I've never had a student want to come to one of those meetings. And I don't blame them. And, but Jack Womack is sitting in the second row. Jack, can you stand for a second? And Jack is a senior at Morse. And he really took it upon himself, took the initiative to email me back almost a year ago now. And just, he went through an experience, not a bad experience, but one that he thought maybe could be better to deal with student media and censorship. And so, he came, he drafted, took some of the wording that we had, but did his own work and really came to two policy meetings because we pressed him to come back. But this policy, you know, he is the driving force behind it. I can support what the changes that he's recommended, and I think maybe Jen can clue to that and Nita. So I just wanted to thank you, Jack, publicly, first having a passion and then seeing it through. So if you have questions, we won't make you come back to the next meeting. You sit here for an hour and a half. But if you have any questions, we certainly will funnel back through Jack just to get some more input from him.
Any questions? Can I ask Jack questions, too?
It's pretty impressive.
Okay, thank you. So again, we'll take up those three, job description and the two policies, we'll take up next, next meeting. 13.0, this is our second public session. This is an opportunity to address the board on any issues that the public might have raised. Any other thoughts from the board? Your page over.
No, no, we're a little busy. We brought one of the kids' policy. That's it.
Yeah, right.
Let me describe them like. It is this policy.
Yep, so if you could just give us your name.
Hello, I am Liam. And I am in this Odysee of the Mind. And Odyssey of the Mind, if you do not know, is when you have, when kids have a problem, at least five problems to pick from, and you have to pick one to work on. And there can be no outside help, or only the kids can do it, the parents can't help at all. So we want regionals and states for second place. And now we're going to Worlds, and we need to raise enough money. Yeah, I'm excited for Worlds, because I've never been to Iowa.
Once you go to Iowa, you'll come back to me.
Well, we just wanted an opportunity to just say how excited we are about the program. You know, I think what Elise was hoping to say was that, you know, it's a program that's been, the actual Odyssey of the Mind program is 40 years old, but only since the late 90s has the program really existed here at RSC1. And it's really hard to anticipate how well you're going to do. I mean, I could, I could say if you watched the video of the kids, we were hoping for third, and then when we didn't get listed, all our parents were like, oh, my goodness, you know? And then when they, you know, called that, you know, it was nothing but a proud moment. You know, but we have been aggressively fundraising. And as of today, our, collectively, our GoFundMe is a little over 8,000 businesses that are participating. And everybody is throwing in coins at the stores that they go to. We have partnered with Burns to do, instead of a trivia night, they're going to let us do some spontaneous. Starlight is talking about making a sandwich or breakfast after us. And then proceeds, Mid Coast Pizza on May 10th. Put it on your notebook because everybody's going to order pizza because a certain percentage is going to go to the team. But it's, you know, it's, it's always great to hear about the teams and the programs that do well and to call attention to Maine for sending, you know, so many teams, even though it's a burden on everybody. It really, the benefits for the whole community to really get behind the idea that, you know, we're, 300 years ago, we were an innovative town building ships. And now we're trying to show the world, 850 teams from all over the world and states, that our kids actually, that they come up with really great ideas as well, they build ideas.
Can you, since it's being reported, what's the GoFundMe site?
I, I can, if you go under GoFundMe and if you look for Odyssey, we're at the first or second, we trended because we really hit high amount quickly. It's all over Facebook. And most of you probably know who Jillian Burke is. She's hit up everybody. Everybody that gets her haircut and has to sit there for an hour hears all about our GoFundMe. So, you know, it's, it's really, we've also created a campaign. If you walk through the streets of Bath, you see a hashtag Bath Proud, and it's infectious. You know, people, we're going to start making buttons so that people can, can wear them. And every, every business that helps us, even just by spreading the word on their Facebook or Instagram or putting a jar out, will be on the back of our shirt. So if you're an Odyssey and Omer, you know that when the program, when your problem starts, the judges say, team, you know, are we ready? And you have to come up with the, you know, in our case, it's game on, that tells them that we're going to start. But our shirts are going to say, Bath, are you ready for Worlds? And the back is going to say, yes, we are. And it's going to have every, you know, company, business, you know, small business, big business, you know, contributing to the cause will be on the back. Be a proud moment.
What's your fundraising goal?
We, we have the, the total of $28,790.40. So that 24 people can go. That's three, the three teams that are 18. And then each team has two coaches and two chaperones. Or, I mean, either has two coaches or two chaperones or a coach and a chaperone. So there's two adults going. So, and then the teams are, our team in particular, where Liam is, is a mix of third, fourth, and fifth for Fisher Mitchell. There's a second Fisher Mitchell team that's fifth graders. And there's a third team for the middle school. And I think most of them are sixth graders.
We're excited to, for the kids, you know, hopefully, when you come back, we'll have you again, we'll have you again here anyways to honor your participation, but hopefully to the breadth of the competition.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, Patrick said that we're coming back. So, but I mean, just as a, as a mother, you know, a lot of these kids haven't even been out of Maine before. And a lot of these kids, this is the first time that they'll be stepping onto a campus, you know? And Odyssey of the Mind, though it, it's not, every state does it, but there are a lot of companies that are innovative and, you know, are about the future, that put on a technology workshop for the kids. They make them all into like arcade games and they do, like NASA's there and they, they talk to the kids. There's all these freebies. But like, this is the kind of program that really puts a kid on course. Like this is a program that changes kids' lives. And, and I think that we've got a few parents that really can't, like, don't have two coins to like rub together. And it's been a community effort to really get these kids on that plane, you know? So, thank you.
Again, I'm Andrea DeJerk, and I am an Odyssey parent of a fourth grader. Jokingly, I was warned about Odyssey of the Mind, having no clue what it entailed when I arrived here in Maine. And that $29,000 goal fund, fundraising has definitely been an eye opener and a challenge. So I don't feel like I would be doing my due diligence to come here and not request if the board has any sort of discretionary fund that they can contribute to our team. Our team has been featured in the Coastal Journal, the Yaliz Times Record. I have been in touch with Susan Collins' office as well. And I really do think that this is an opportunity for Bath to shine and really get behind three teams, you know, going to such a big competition. The stories that we've heard. My husband is a master chief at Supeshaw. And his, one of the lieutenants that he works with is from Georgia, is actually a former Odyssey of the Mind member. So where I come from, I've never heard of it, but talking to people and trying to get money from them has definitely opened that door to a lot of conversation and how it impacted their childhood growing up and going to these competitions.
Thank you. Good luck.
I know these meetings will leave, and I know Elise has to leave. But she received, I just wanted to speak for her, she had received two heartfelt letters and these little contributions from two families who don't, they're not even in this area, but their kids have gone and doing Odyssey with this nice letter by, back to their kids. And, I mean, it really touched Elise, so she had wanted to, you know, meet those. First, she should have taken with her. But I just wanted to share that with her.
I can actually tell you, one of those letters I read, and the man who wrote the letter definitely contributed his son going to the Air Force Academy and graduating as an Air Force pilot to his time with Odyssey of the Mind.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you. Okay, 14.0, we wanted just to set a couple meetings. 14.1, as I mentioned before, is the second reading of the budget. And we will be required to sign warrants that night until, that meeting will be Monday, May 7th at Blue School at 6 o'clock. And 14.2, our next regular meeting is May 21st. Okay, thank you. Do we need a motion from John? Motion by Jen, second by Allen. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.